...in 2017, now to verify appropriations of 3,624,000 for the purchase and installation of light in the streetlights. Be it a name that the city can be appropriated with some of 3,624,000.
Motion to waive the reading. Thank you very much.
I'd like to refer to Mayor Representative Chris Walker.
Good evening, Madam President. The mayor from May just pretty clear. The appropriation for you tonight of 3.6 million dollars provides the Department of Energy Center to convert about 6,500 streetlights citywide to state-of-the-art energy efficient and cost-effective LED conversions. Proposal marks the culmination of several years' worth of work by Mayor folks gained in this council with the start of the purchase of the streetlights from National Grid a couple of years ago, followed by an extensive RFP process to select a qualified contractor for potential LED conversion and a system-wide audit of our existing streetlight systems to determine the needs and costs of that potential conversion. The winning proposal for the LED conversion came from Siemens. Clint Schuffel from Siemens is here tonight representing that company and the city to provide the council with the details of the work in anticipation of the appropriation request will be moved to the Finance Committee for discussion of the conversion. For handing over to Clint, Mayor asked me briefly to outline the administration's perspective on this proposal. Essentially, it makes sense in three different ways. Number one, it's good for the environment by reducing our overall municipal electrical consumption by more than two megawatts per year. It's about 10% of our total electrical output that we use as a city. Two, it makes sense financially. Projected cost savings from the energy reduction we use to pay the necessary financing. Three, it's good for the quality of life of our residents. The LED technology provides a cleaner, crystal light, and the bulbs of the lifespan is three times as long as the current sodium bathing lights that we use today. Clint will walk through the technical details, but I want to quickly expand on the projected financials in a little bit prior to this point. The top sheet package tonight shows a drop in production costs associated with the purchase after anticipated land funding from National Grid budgets. This shows the scenario in which we've gone to purchase for 10 years, and now roughly $3,000, $300,000 annual payment received from the last column is substantially less than the cost savings we anticipated conversion generates. That, as Clint described, between electricity costs and maintenance savings, those savings are anticipated to be more than $400,000 a year. And those savings can kill more hours than guaranteed number of hours that the city consumes. If only those match mine, Siemens would make up the difference. With that, with the President's permission, I'd like to turn over to Clint Schuffel from Siemens to give you your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Hello.
Good evening, Madam President, member of the council, and resident here tonight. My name is Clint Schuffel, and I represent Siemens Mobility. And thank you, Chris, for the intro. Just to briefly introduce myself, I've been with Siemens about five years and have done this exact type of project in about 35 other communities in Massachusetts, about 15 others around New England. And this is our 12th National Grid project as well. Prior to that, I was a department head, similar to Mike Coffey, for another city in Mass, and had oversight of streetlights in that role. So most of my knowledge of streetlights is on the job train and working for a city. The project that we've brought before you tonight has been supported by a number of city departments, and many of them are here tonight, some in the front row. Alzardioso from the mayor's office, you heard from Chris already. The TPAL department has been instrumental in this project. Mike and Eddie are here tonight, as well as public buildings. And some of our, many of our energy savings figures have come from Shelley Dean. And the purchasing and legal departments are helping with the contract documents as well. As was mentioned, the goal of this project is to reduce energy and cost without the quality of the lighting on the streets at night. And this is essentially phase two of a project that began in the fall of 2014. Amazing deal, I wish we could repeat that twice, but the city bought the streetlights from Android for a whopping dollar, and ultimately got about $350,000 in savings from that $1 purchase. In this case, now that the city owns the lights, you have the ability to go and convert them. And as was mentioned, the savings are going to be in excess of $400,000 between energy reduction and maintenance costs. To break out those costs on the screen now, the current costs are about $657,000 for energy, $78,000 for maintenance, and that's by contract currently. And that adds up to about $735,000 current expenses. And if you break out what those expenses will be with the LED lights, you see a reduction of about 60% from $735,000 now to about $424,000 in the future. As Chris mentioned, this is a very significant energy savings reduction for the city. It represents about 10% of the city's overall electricity use. The usage going from about 3.8 million kilowatt-hours to about 1.6. And there's various equivalents you can put to that in terms of tons of carbon reduced, trees planted, cars off the road, things like that. The project financials, to summarize, can't quite do as well as the MSBA project you saw previously, at 66% outside funding. We're going to try to get about halfway there. Got about 33% or so of the project that will be eligible for outside funding, and I'll show that in just a moment. The project also includes replacing 8% of the city's traffic signals. We've gone through each of the locations with TPAL and found which locations have recently been redone or about to be reconstructed. And so the remainder would get this full-scale replacement. There's a 10% contingency in the 3.6 million for things like police details, wiring issues that are found when the electrician is up the pole. The project also includes what's called a seven-pin photocell receptacle, and that's basically a power source for a device in the future that could be used to do things like provide Wi-Fi, could be some kind of traffic sensor, environmental sensor, things like that as a power source. And some communities are using that to do things both to control their lights and do other things as well. The project will qualify the city for a rebate from National Grid based on the city's ability to negotiate a higher rate. Typically, cities and towns get 25 cents a kilowatt-hour reduce. The city negotiated to the 30 cents. That projected rebate is $637,000. There's also a recent DOER grant program that will make the city eligible for approximately $450,000. So of the 3.6 million, there is about $1.1 million of brand funding that can come from outside city funds. The project scope, to briefly give you an overview of what we've been hired to do, some of which has already been done, the audit of the system, we've had engineers go out and find where all the lights are. We actually found your inventory is about 98% accurate. We found about 2% of the lights that don't appear to exist. You're paying for them anyway, so we're going to get them taken off the bill. Sports lighting is not included in this project, primarily because the burn time is much lower than dusted-gone lighting. The fixture selection process we went through was, again, working with the city to understand what you've already replaced recently. A lot of the lights outside the door here have recently been replaced. We're not going to redo those, but we didn't identify all the lights that need replacing, either because they're high-pressure sodium or because they're older in age. We've carefully attempted to match the, find the appropriate brightness for each street, as well as to match the style of the light that's there so that they look pretty much identical during the day. The project financials that I've talked about already, the savings, the costs, those are all guaranteed by Siemens through the project. And the fixed costs are set based on the number of lights to be installed. Again, and those have been carefully counted. The project would begin, if approved by the council, later this spring, and would be complete this fall. And the scope includes about 6,500 different streetlights, about 90% of those are the Cobrahead style, about 10% are floodlights and various kinds of decorative style. The warranty on the fixtures includes both a 10-year product warranty, and Siemens is on the hook for the labor associated with any lights that fail in the next 10 years. And the city is paying for that as part of the capital cost of the project. As was mentioned, the savings is guaranteed for the next 10 years, and that is done through a review of the city's electric bills, because the vast majority of the streets are not, the streetlights are not metered, so it's a matter of just checking the billing tariff that the city receives on their monthly bills. Just very briefly about Siemens, we are based here in Millbrook in Mass. We've got about 35 full-time employees, and all we do within this Siemens office is maintain traffic lights and streetlights. So we're very much focused on this type of work. And we've done, as I mentioned, we've done very similar projects in about 35 different Massachusetts communities, many of which were also performance contracts. And we've not yet experienced a single shortfall. It is relatively simple math, admittedly, to get this right on the guarantee, and we have not had any short calls to date. The recent projects that we've done, I won't name them all, they're on the screen, but we've had eight different communities in Mass that are Enbridge, and then three do conversions in Rhode Island, including City Problems. This project is probably the fifth or sixth biggest one in the state. Most of the large communities in Massachusetts have done this since about 20 years ago when the utility deregulation happened, and cities could buy their streetlights. As you can see from the screen, Springfield is the only one not to take advantage so far. And about nine of the 11 largest communities already have projects that are done or in Any of you that have picked up a LED bulb, and I'll be fair, I'll say Home Depot and Lowe's for your kitchen or your house somewhere probably understand why this project is attractive. Costs have come down quite a bit, electric use goes down a lot as a result. And it's a highly visible project that no longer sacrifices quality for saving. We had that with compact fluorescents. The color was awful, they had to forever to warm up. You don't have those issues with LEDs. As was mentioned, the design light is much higher. And if any of you have got a call from a constituent about an motion sensor not working in the streetlight because it turned out as they walked, turned off as they walked underneath it, that's because sodium lights cycle randomly as they die. LEDs will not do that, so you will not have random lights turning on and off. Picture on the screen, it was just one taken in the middle of a conversion. Half the street was LED, half was sodium. You get a little sense of how the environment changes from an orange glow to a more wood light type environment. As part of this bid process, Siemens looked at various LED manufacturers. We don't make these fixtures. We do the shopping for our city and town customers. We look at how much energy they're going to save you versus what they're going to cost and come up with what the best fixture fit is for the different styles. And again, we do try to mimic as close as we can to what's out there so it looks the same. And the fixtures that we've proposed are ones that we've installed in eight other communities around the Boston area, so we're very confident that this is going to give the city a long life and a high-quality light. And that concludes my presentation. I'll defer to your questions, do my best to answer them, or punt to my city staff colleagues. Well, thank you very much for your attention, and I look forward to your questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Seth?
Yeah, Councilor Ford. Good evening, Madam President. My first question is relative to the savings that you referenced. It says that we already realized a savings of $300,000, and we were looking to further realize 400, is it further realize 424, or is it further realize 74 for a total of 424? Page three on your slides.
The 424 is in addition to the 350.
So our $1,000 purchase came back with a $300,000 annual savings.
Yes.
Now we're saying through this process, annually, an additional savings of 424 for a total of 774 annually.
Correct. Yes. The first phase was basically the difference between what the city can maintain the lights by contracting it out versus what Enbridge was charging you. The second piece is changing the lights also saves more energy and further maintenance costs.
Well, we have very much seen a change, not only in financial, but in quality of service with the city taking it over. It used to be, we'd put out a request for a traffic light out on a street. Since we called in, it was like neverland. We would not get an answer, we would not get the service of the utility. Now I call into the mayor's office, and we contract her out on the streets every week until Wednesday, signal day, lighting day, and it's getting fixed very quickly. So we've seen a substantial turnaround in the service that we, municipality, were able to provide on the light outages. So the second thing I wanted to talk about, and Shelley, Ms. Dean wants to come up and talk about the energy reduction. So not only is it a financial reduction, but 60% energy reduction. I take that as the topic you are hoping to speak on.
Yes. Great. Do you have specific questions?
No, I just thought you might want to elaborate. Okay. So what that means for the city to be able to reduce, make such a substantial reduction in our energy.
Absolutely. We, I've been waiting to have this opportunity because...
Shelley, can I just interrupt you really quickly? If you could just pull back a little closer. You are important. So we want to hear from you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
What I was saying is that I've been waiting for this opportunity for the city to be able to first purchase the streetlights from that Enbridge, and then to be able to convert them to LEDs. The city currently uses about 3.6 million kilowatt-hours a year lighting its streetlights and floodlights and decorative lights. And these proposed replacements will use approximately 1.5 million kilowatt-hours a year instead. So we will save on the order of magnitude of 2.2 million kilowatt-hours a year. The city as a whole, for all of its activities, the municipality uses around 21 million kilowatt-hours a year. So this is about 10% savings in all of the electricity that the city uses for all of its activities. So it's a remarkable opportunity to save energy in a relatively easy way.
Thank you. I think the rest of my questions are for our Siemens representative.
Sure.
You had referenced smart technology, and this was something that I was pretty excited about as I saw this contract coming through, and whether it's the power source or the public Wi-Fi add-ons, hotspots, and being able to save the city, you know, down line, be able to break on. But relative to the smart technology, we have been able to realize substantial savings and quick turnaround within our public works. And I know I saw the commissioner in the back of the Republican Water Department. And basically, it's the traffic software as to when there's an issue, it's proactive and alerts you. And is that something that we're not going to be relying on constituents to say, hey, the streetlights out in my neighborhood? We are going to have technology in the public works department or TPAL department that will trigger the prepare. How is that going to work?
The ability to remotely monitor the streetlights, as you've described, is not currently included in the project's scope. There was a cost benefit that was looked at, and at this point, the proposal found, the recommendation was that that monitoring capability was not worth the cost to install it. Part of the issue is that National Grid does not recognize any savings if you're, were to them or to the operating hours or less than they assume. So there wasn't any energy savings at this point until National Grid changes their tariff. So the current recommendation, there is more information about the systems and their costs in the full report, which I think you'll have a copy of soon. If you'd like to look a little more, and maybe if you have other more detailed questions. But it was studied as part of our report.
Right. I do remember some conversation about that. And is that something that, again, down line would then be able to add on, or is that, is that an add-on feature? I think that the contracts have it as a consideration, right? This is what we're looking for, this is the base package, and here's the amenities we'd like to add. For example, Wi-Fi hotspots, remote monitoring.
Yeah, I should have brought a little show-and-tell sample. The fixtures have a photocell on the ton, a photocell receptacle, and it's about the size, shape of a hockey puck. And it basically just twists into the fixture to serve as the light switch. It says turn on in the evening, turn off when the sun comes up. That, what the city's purchasing is, that receptacle has seven pins in it. So the only thing that would have to be changed is that hockey puck that sits on top. You don't have to rewire the fixture or do any electrical work. It's basically about 30 seconds, twist, turn. Once the smart node has power, it says, here I am, starts broadcasting its location.
What was the additional cost on the contract?
The gross cost was about $750,000, and the DOER program will pay about 10% of the equipment costs, so I think the net cost to the city is about $675.
What we're saying is for the next 10 years, you're guaranteeing the labor, and it's on you to be doing the maintenance replacement, so it is a worth investment of the $675 at this time.
Correct. And we've seen a very low failure rate on these fixtures. Most, I think the oldest ones, say in Arlington, are about five years old now, so a lot of this longevity data is still kind of lab-tested, but very, very low failure rates we can see in perfectly installed in the last five years.
And on page six of your presentation, it talked about inclusion of replacement of 8% of the traffic signal lamps. So you're talking about, you know, the traffic signals, red, yellow, green, those lamps.
And walk and don't walk.
And walk and don't walk. Right. However, just the bulb itself is going to be changed?
Yes.
Okay. So part of what I was, I guess where I was going with this is one of my field trips to our traffic engineer's office, there was the infrastructure, and it was kind of antique-looking, and I complimented her, I think she was a history buff. She says, no, counselor, that's the spare parts for the intersection of Brandon and Merton Parkway. It literally had a full, you know, a pin system, pull-out insert to adjust the signal timing for one of the biggest intersections in the city of Quincy. So I was very optimistic in reading this, that we're going to be talking about remote monitoring of our traffic signalizations. But that is something that the hardware itself would then need to be upgraded. You're just going with the energy efficiency for the bulbs at this point.
My company would love to help you with that, but it's not in the scope of work for this project.
And I can just imagine, I can just imagine where the budget would go on that, because we are a very old city, and as we know, traffic and car may are two of the top topics. It's kind of the nemesis particularly of this body. And I know the progress that we're making with TPAL will eventually get there. But just trying to understand, when you said the signal lamps, I thought we may be able to move to some smart technology there, but that is just relative to lighting.
One thing that is being done, there are a small number of signals in the city that the size or the diameter of them is smaller than current federal standards, as well as there's some walk lights that are too small. We're bringing everything up to current code as part of the project.
That's all. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind folks, I know a lot of people want to say something, but we will be putting this into, I believe this is going to be moved to committee this evening. And I just wanted to clarify, if you could come back on the evening that we do discuss it further in depth, in depth, then hopefully we will. Okay, great. Thank you. So just reminding everybody that I am a counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. And you mentioned about the savings, guaranteed savings. Last time I heard that, we got ourselves in total trouble here. But in relation to it, it sounds like those have some metrics set up in which to measure those savings through the billing process, like get a benefit. And so I guess the question I'm having, the other question would be, in the event, and it sounds like you've hit your metrics in the past, we've got the communities you're dealing with. But in the event that you were not to, are there remedies that are contained within the contract that the city has with you to stall what goes where and what goes out?
Yes. And the city basically has two options: have us write a check, or have us go into the city and find that equivalent amount of energy savings somewhere else and do more work to get you to the savings that were guaranteed.
Okay. Well, again, for you, Madam President, to Mr. Walker, this is going to committee, correct? So one of the things that would be helpful, I think, for us would be, we could see the contract as well, if you had that. And again, it's an excellent presentation, and you can refer to it yourself, but I think that might be helpful for our team as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it.
How many committee counsel?
I'll echo, I don't have to be there. I'll echo the sentiments of Counselor Fan, your energy savings payback period. They were just honeyballed. You should have had honeyballed. Obviously, honeyballed wasn't a good situation for the city to be in. So essentially, this is promised savings versus the upfront costs is what we're talking about here.
Correct.
And we've already saved $400,000 from the maintenance side of things? Is that what the...
Correct. $350,000 just through the purchase of the lights from National Grid.
Phase two, it was the third page.
And so, yes.
Spring 2016, result, annual energy maintenance decreased by $424,000. So you're saying the maintenance reduction was phase one, 350, and the other result, phase two, there was an energy maintenance decrease by 40. So can you just explain what you mean by those two numbers?
Sure. The first phase, the $350,000 in savings, is the difference between what the city can maintain the lights for when it took ownership versus what National Grid was charging you before you took ownership in September 2014. This project has two components that add to that number.
No, I know, before you say, I want to get to what's already been saved. So $350,000 was saved in 2014.
Yes.
Is that from 2014 to date, or is that just in the year 2014?
That is an annual savings number.
Okay, so 2015, 2016, it's $350,000 a year.
Yes.
All right. And then you're saying, as phase two went into effect, spring 2016, that there has been a decrease in cost by $424,000?
Not yet.
This is if.
The debate is, you're right. The spring 2016 was when the city started this procurement process of selecting for this work. So the savings would not occur until later in 2017, when the billing changes are reported to National Grid, and the lights that are metered, you know, those savings will happen immediately.
Okay, so this, here when you write...
It's the fall of this year when the savings would start.
Right. So when you write phase two, spring 2016, result, annual energy maintenance decreased by $424,000, that seems to me to indicate that that's something that's already been done. When you say a previous date, spring 2016, and then you say result, that seems to me to indicate that that result has already been realized, and it would attach to the date that's in this heading above. But you're saying that that would be a future.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be a result that we would achieve in the future, having commenced in spring 2016. Okay. So my question now, so about the actual realized benefits, the $350,000, where has that money gone? Have we established a fund to help offset the bond for this, or to pay for this?
I'm going to phone a friend.
You stay there, dear. Don't worry about it. Mr. Walker, we have 350,000. Have we been tucking that away since 2014?
No, I have a sense, Counselor, we play the, through you, Madam President, the sense counselors, that would have been reflected in the annual operating budget for expanding the streetlights year to year, that there would have been a reduction in those costs. You don't have the budget in front of me, I'm a little concerned, but...
Okay. But so we haven't been tucking that money away to pay for this work for, right, or something?
Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Al.
Good evening, Counselor. I believe back in 2013, the year before, we actually purchased the streetlights. The budget was cut to reflect what they anticipated the savings would be. We'd have to go back and look at that budget, but...
And that's the DBW budget, right? Because this whole thing was on the DBW.
At the time, it was DBW, I believe, Counselor, yes.
All right. Why don't you stand there? Are you done with that?
Yes.
I don't want to catch you up. Okay. So the rollout for this thing is summer, fall, 2017, so this summer into the fall, 6,500 lights to be swapped over, or that's the total, 6,500?
I believe that's the number.
I mean, that's the number that's in here, but that's everything, right? That's not just one phase of it. That's not just one phase of it. So we would borrow all this money upfront, 2.6 million dollars, we'd borrow upfront and then the work would commence with everything, right off the bat?
Right. It's somewhat similar to SBA, we require to borrow money upfront, we need to grant money.
Okay. Okay. And is there any way that we could approach this in a more phased approach where, you know, we did it in a quarter at a time to ensure that we realize the energy savings that have been promised? Again, I have Honeywell in my head in the issue. I wasn't on this, I didn't sit on this body when the Honeywell deal was passed, but I sat in the body when some of the Honeywell issues were discovered and we had to pay, you know, we had to authorize additional expenditure to cover what Honeywell left us holding the bag on. So with Honeywell in my mind, I'm curious as to whether or not we can limit risk on this in terms of rolling it out in a more phased approach. Or if it's 6,500 or everything, could you start with, you know, 1,500, do 1,500, 1,500, 1,500?
I guess I would...
And would fall can be last, as has been leaked it out.
It would depend on that, but I think, you know, I would look back to the other communities that have done this successfully. And I think the success rate is under 100%. I would prefer to claim on that one. I would think that the price we got in the bid was reflective, we could have come together and doing this job all at once.
That it'd be more expensive if we paid, if basically did it. Okay. All right, well, I mean, that covers my questions, you know, off the top of my head. I'm sure we'll get more into it, but I'd like to get more information about that as to, you know, why that approach is better. Because I'm not saying a phased approach is better, but I'd like to know that the approach we're being presented with. Thank you, Officer Chair.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Al.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one question. This is Clint.
Yes.
Clint, how are you doing? Thank you for your presentation. I'll see if we can talk more about it, but there's a new term up here. I used to use it in the budget process, need versus wants. It's going to be a new thing called TBL, the bottom line. 3.624 is the amount for appropriation. You said 33% of your reimbursement was grant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Of that 33% reimbursement, you're saying there's 774, 774,000 savings per year. Is that correct?
That is the combination of the two, the purchasing of the lights in 2014 and then this project.
So the bottom line is when do we get, or when do we guarantee to get the return on that 3.624? What year? Because that's what most people, I think, in the public eye would even see. When do we get our return? You guys are moving 3.6 if it's appropriated. When does the city, you know, get that return? What year?
The only, the only snag that we've run into throughout this process, and I think you had a bit of it in the purchase, is that we've got to have EndGrid adjust your bills. And we submit the information to EndGrid within a week or two of installing these lights. And that is something we phase because we don't want to wait till the end of the project till we start reporting. That can take a couple billing cycles. So if we were to finish this project October, November timeframe, it's probably January, February timeframes where the actual bill is reduced by National Grid because, again, these lights aren't metered. So it's not like changing the bulb in your kitchen where the electric meter automatically registers the change. This requires some cooperation from National Grid to make your bills what they should be. So I would say early 2018 is when those bills will come down to reflect the LED lights.
So you have, I don't have my calculator, 3.6, you said 33% is going to be in the form of a grant or a rebate. So that, when is that going to come back to the city, 2018?
Those typically come in between 30 and 45 days after we report to EndGrid that the project is complete.
Okay, do you have a...
They'll often come out and do like a drive-by or inspect a few lights just to make sure the city actually did the work.
So roughly, I'm looking at 3.6, a third is 1.2. So 1.2 million dollars is going to come back roughly in a couple of days to the city?
Yes, I think it's slightly, it's closer to 1.1. But again, it's based on the kilowatt hours reduced, so we'll know that exact number once the project is completed. And then the DOER grant is essentially calculated after you get the EndGrid rebate. That's, we're projecting that to be 450,000.
So now we're at 2.5 million.
Yes.
Okay. So now we take the 774 that we're talking about, the savings of early savings, and where are we going to get that right there? So we did 774 for savings per year of the 2.5, we're looking at, we're going to go third year, in the third year, we start to save the money.
And the difference, we didn't count that first 350,000 in the payback numbers, we discounted the 424. So actually, all of those payback numbers on the screen are, take them, divide them by two roughly, if you took into account what the city saved just from buying a light.
Okay, we'll go more into discussion. I just kind of wanted to do, we were talking about this, a lot of viewers are watching based on next stuff coming up, but just to give a rough estimate, when we're getting ready to go into budget season as well, the numbers are all over the place right now. And the council is, is, you know, to make sure that we're going to be doing the right thing, moving forward with efficiency, a lot of efficiency, a lot of appropriations. I just want to make sure that we're, we're going in the right direction for this allocation, which I think it is because we're going to get our money back at some point with investment of energy efficiency. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Having not previously been heard, Counselor.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Ford.
Madam President, I would like to give the motion to refer this finance committee to a more substantive conversation with Clint.
Yes.
He'll be available, I know, with the program. So that would be that. Thank you.
All right, so motion to finance, I think we need to refer to public buildings. Okay. And is there a second? Second, hold on a second. Great, you guys have it. So we look at private building, which is get...